All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight it's a town council regular meeting Wednesday, August 16th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Green Room. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should send reminders to each other in our town spaces.
Meeting tonight is... All right, item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors hearing, seeing none? We will move on to the approval of the minutes for the August 2nd, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, next up is item number four, appointments and reappointments. So we have two on the agenda for this evening. The first is Ray Regott, Democrat for the Human Services Advisory Board for a term until 6:30, 2026. Hello, how are you? Good. I was kind of shocked, I was looking for your father. Okay. But welcome. And when you go home tonight, tell your father you're better looking than him, okay?
Looking from Big Ray.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Ray? Junior?
Thank you very much. It's great to see a young person getting involved.
Yes. Thank you very much. All right, motion to approve or to appoint?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you, thank you for coming forward.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And the next is just a reappointment, Jeff Hesser for the Fire Marshal for a term until July 1st, 2027.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you.
Does a young man have to be sworn in?
Yes, you'll have to go to the town clerk's office upstairs during regular business hours and just get sworn in before you go to the next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Dennis. Item number five is the Historic Documents Preservation Grant.
This is a regular grant program that the town clerk utilizes to do ways to improve the archiving of what we have here for historic documents. She's used this annually. Council needs to authorize the application to take place in order for her to submit for a $6,000 grant.
Questions?
No.
Nope? So we need a motion to approve?
Yep.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Okay, number six, line item transfers. Quite a few, so buckle up. All right, so we'll start with, the first one is to the Finance Department, which is a heart and hypertension expense for $100,000. And it'll come out of our health insurance. That's what we talked about last time. I'll say one that we've already discussed, so look for a motion to approve.
Motion.
The second?
Second.
Discussion?
We talked about it last time.
You good, Dennis? Questions?
Yeah, is this a final payment, once and gone, or is this an installment?
This is the significant initial liability payment, so you will have future payments based on co-pays for drugs and doctor's visits, but this is the initial disability rating fund.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. The next is a request from the Assessor's Office for salaries for $3,034, coming from periodicals, in-service, general supplies, other professional services and technical services. Any questions?
Nope.
I have a question, and I probably should understand this already, but I noticed that this is an item down through a couple of others. Are these salaries that are renegotiated? Is this a part of...I'm sorry I have to ask this, I should have asked it before, but what is it?
I think Sue's referenced this in the past, that there's an additional pay that had to be considered in the fiscal year, so this is going to be a common theme across everybody.
Okay.
So instead of budgeting 26.1 or 26.2 pays, the budget was based on 26 pays, so now you're just picking up the difference.
Okay, all right.
That is exactly what it is, and this year we had to provide days, so it represents five days of period, and that's really what all the most departments are overrunning on.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, next town clerk, same thing, salaries full-time, 1805, coming from other professional technical services. Questions?
So moved.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Inland Wetlands, again, same thing, $515, coming from other professional services and postage.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Next up is Finance, miscellaneous, this is miscellaneous overages for Pearson for $780. Questions?
Late-received fuel bills?
Looks like they were late receiving the fuel bill?
As in fact, it would have been. We're still receiving bills after the last posting, so it was another fuel bill for Pearson.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah, they just come in late, so...
After the fiscal year was over.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, motion to approve?
Yes, moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Police and Communications overtime expenses for $19,005,1172. Questions?
So moved first.
Okay. Second, any further discussion?
Hmm.
Carol, is that your discussion?
Yeah, that's my discussion.
Carol's discussion is just hmm.
Yeah. But they overtime was cut in this last budget.
So here are no other comments other than hmm. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Animal control salary increases $728.45. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Building salaries again, $1179. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Town manager, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Town manager, final funding for the flash flood of 2018, $59,124. Questions?
Wow.
So this is five years after the fact? NRCS was a proposed funding source that was going to help respond to the flash flooding. It took an awfully long time for the project to reach some point of closure, you needed an army corps to sign off on it. So yes, we did get a grant, but we increased our costs for it. This reflects expense that needs to be repaid in order to balance out the account, because currently it's overdrawn.
Hmm.
What's NRCS?
Oh, what does that stand for?
Is the grant federal or state?
It's federal.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Yep.
I'm sorry, note contingency balance is 12627 at 6:30, so this is, that reduces the contingency to 60,000.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Okay, town manager, reapropriation of unused capital project balances for a total amount of $43,006.7.
So this was decreasing accounts that the council already agreed to during the carryover discussion, and then applying those balances to projects that were assumed to be filled when we passed the budget. So certain projects were axed under the assumption that we were going to sweep accounts to backfill it. This is the action that allows those IT-heavy projects to move forward.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That is it.
Hmm.
Uh-oh, that was a big one at the end, Carol. All right, item number seven, Finance Director's Report, Sue.
I have...
Uh-oh, you better be...Carol, behave.
I'm ready.
July is a busy month as far as dollar-wise goes in transactions, though revenues, the collective for the taxes, well, revenues in total were 27.4 million, of which 27.1 million was for the tax collections. We also received a state grant for the town aid, which is one half of the budgeted amount of $135,000, and $77,000 of state town service revenues, and then $100,000 of investment income. So that's the total revenues for July. The current tax levy collection for July, just in comparison to last year, we were 52.9% compared to 49% the same time last year. Expenses for the month of July were 12.3 million in total, 8.7 of that were cash transactions, and 3.6 were non-cashing, excuse me. 3.6 million, that's reflected in the financials as that's the noncash reapropriations made out of fund balance for fiscal year '24 for the capital project, so 3.1 of that was in towns, and then a half a million of those in the water beds. Those are just transfers, they show us the expense on your expense report, they're noncash. 8.7 million were actual cash expenditures, and what that was made up of is 3 million of debt payments in July. There was a July 15th debt payment, and then an August 1st debt payment, and we always make them in advance, so that reflects also the August 1st payments. 2.1 million of education transfers, 880,000 for salary and fringe benefits, it's a little bit higher because it includes a salary increase due to the union negotiation settlements July 1, as well as one-time payments per contract, such as longevity under a couple of the contracts and things like that. As well as other semi-annual and annual payments were also made in July. For example, we made $1.6 million dollar payments to fund the police pension and the fire pension plans. That goes out with one health sum in July, as well as the town insurance policies of a half a million, actually $519,000. That as well goes out as a lump sum payment in July. We also make a $74,000 semi-annual payment to the health district as budgeted, and then we also make the quarterly workers' comp insurance, which is $78,000. So there's a lot of cash expenditures going out that are required to be paid as soon as fiscal year begins. Investment balances, because of our tax collections, are way up, so the cash balance at the end of July is $38,999, and interest income for the month in, like I mentioned before, was $102,000. This is comparison a year ago, the interest income for July was $8,800. That's how much things have changed from the year. The fund balance doesn't change until the audit is finalized, so it remains as was reported last month, which is 21.6% of fiscal year '24 expenditures, representing $4 million over the town policy of 15%. The contingency balance for fiscal year '24, as the town council approved, was $340,000, and that has not changed as well, so it's $340,000, remember during the budget process that was in constant due to the contract negotiations and the process. ARPA, there was an additional, since I reported last, additional 95,000 of ARPA funds, so a total of 771 investments. The next month's report will reflect the new ARPA projects that were approved at the town meeting, as of this reporting, they were approved, so they're not on this one. That's it for my reporting of numbers of just what's going on in our office. The fiscal year '23 closes, you know, is consuming our time. Invoices and POs were closed as of Monday, which means that hopefully the line item transfers that you presented your last two meetings is it. I don't have anything on my list right now, except unless anything else comes up, so we should be good at this point. Now, we're just working on all the other annual things that we need to do to make the books from a budget basis, which is how we keep our books to an accrual basis, so it's all the entries are required for that. That's requiring our time, as well as just annual things that are required, like fixed assets, depreciation, things like that. So we're pretty busy with a lot of things. Audit is in process, we're in constant contact with the auditors. No longer do they come in and sit for two weeks and then leave, you know, it's kind of like a constant thing, they work from home, they come, you know, it's actually kind of nice this way. They have a portal, we upload things to the portal, so it's kind of an ongoing type of thing, so it works nicely. That concludes my report for July.
Any questions for Sue?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Sue. All right, item number eight, Chairman's Report. Just remind everybody again, tomorrow night, we are 6 o'clock in the Rose Room.
Yes.
So tomorrow night, 6, in the Rose Room for the downtown, and also, everybody should have gotten the paper that Mary handed out, so that we can, Abby had given to her, so that we can give some information before our meeting tomorrow night, so that we can have some stuff to discuss when we get to that workshop tomorrow night at 6:00. And also fireworks celebration next Friday, so that starts at 4:00.
That was fast.
Right, quick. Item number nine, Town Manager's Report.
So there's a couple of items to go over with you that's beyond what's in the report. The Sustainability Committee did finish their work and submitted the Sustainable CT application for this month. This is their second application to be a sustainable CT town at the bronze certification level, which is the entry level, so that will be reviewed, and we'll have a determination as to whether or not Clinton is going to get the points for the work that's been done going forward. The steep application for the Fire Department radios is due on Friday, so I'm finalizing the grant application at present. The explanatory text for the charter revision process will be available in the town clerk's office, the town manager's office, and the library is going to be providing it also, so that material will be available for the public in the lead-up to the November election. Town clerk will also be making it available to those who ask for an absentee ballot, so the envelopes going out will be a little larger than they've been in the past. We will need to have a conversation in the near term on the Fire Department regarding their desire to purchase a boat. You will recall that, those of you, I think everyone except for Hank, at least heard once that they were going to seek a grant in order to pay for a replacement of the fire response boat. They were unsuccessful in that grant. They've been unsuccessful twice in getting federal funding for a boat, which then made it a town project. We talked about this once before, going into a town meeting last year, where the council's desire was to take money out of undesignated fund balance to pay for the balance of a fire apparatus, which left the funding of the boat in some doubt, as there's not enough money to pay for the boat. So the Board, the Fire Department issued a bid, we have a bid for a manufacturer to give them a boat, we have a quote, but we're going to have to have a conversation around financing that, whether that should be a lease purchase, as we've done for some major vehicles, and then what the term is going to be and the rest, so that an award can be made going forward. So that will have to be a conversation had at a future date. Another item that we had talked about before was utilizing some federal grant for transportation alternatives, which was to put sidewalks in. This was to run sidewalks from CVS out towards the water company. The cost for that was pretty high, the town had to put a local match in, that local match was not where the town was comfortable to put the money in. Did go back and forth with the engineer and the Department of Transportation, trying to re-scope it down, since there seemed to be some interest if it was a smaller project, that maybe we could bite that off. So we're down to a smaller project, smaller budget, but the municipal share is at about $340,000 for a smaller project, which would take sidewalks from basically CVS to North High Street at the railroad crossing. So that's a little bit less than what our original out-of-pocket was going to be, but not that much less. So I just need some, I don't need it tonight, if you want to cogitate on it, but there'll have to be a discussion with the department as to whether we're interested in moving forward with the project or not. In other DOT news, Clinton will be the proud recipient of a project to address wrong-way signage with flashers at exit 63. So there's a number of highway exits across the state that have been flagged for potential risk of wrong-way drivers entering the highway going the wrong way, so they're going to be doing engineering to be completed hopefully by October, with a bid advertisement in December to install lit flashers and signage telling drivers that they're going the wrong way. Apparently there'll be some sort of notification that will go to the state police to let them know that a wrong-way driver has entered the highway at whatever that exit is, so that they're aware, and I guess presumably respond to that. Another item for council action at a future date is who is going to be the town of Clinton's representative to the Connecticut Water Company? They have a customer advisory council. In the past, our appointee was Mark Richards. He does not want to do that anymore. You need to put somebody on who is a Clinton resident and also a customer of Connecticut So they're looking for, we need a backfill for Mark.
Put the word out.
Is there anyone on a board of commission that would be more appropriate than somebody else?
It doesn't have to be somebody from the council, it could be a general member of the public, it just...
Or another board of commission.
They just have to be a resident and a customer of the water company, so... If you have a well, you can't be considered.
I mean, I would do it, but I have a well.
You all have wells, right? They all have wells.
You all got a well.
I'm looking at it, hey? I'm looking at it, hey?
Got their well.
I am sure they're interesting meetings, or more recently, I think it was more of a discussion of investments and their rate setting, from where they were going to go, made it of interest. For your awareness, this is the formal notification from the State Historic Preservation Office that the nomination of the Commerce Street Historic District will be considered on Friday, September 15th, at a SHPO meeting to discuss the potential designation of the district. So this notice gives you an overview of the properties, there's a map showing what would be the limits of the district, and then the benefits of it. This notice did go to everybody who's a property owner in the district, so that they're aware of it for their interest.
How long ago did they get that?
My copy came on the 14th, so I'm assuming they got it at about the same time.
Thank you.
The meeting is a month out, so that's at least 30 days' notice of whatever level of participation they want to have in the process up in Hartford. Sue noted that the ARPA funding, so a number of ARPA-funded projects are now moving, so all the park and rec projects, design contracts were signed, and initial payments have been working their way down to Finance Department, other nonprofits in there seeking funding have also been pushed down to Finance, so those second tranche dollars are starting the process of moving following the council's town meeting's decision earlier in August of this month. And then the last item for your awareness is at some point in time, we're going to have to have a license agreement signed with the Connecticut Water Company to put antennas on one of their water towers. This would be part of the radio project for public safety, because it involves a land interest and is a longer term than three years, ultimately has to go to a town meeting, so the council would have to act to refer it to a town meeting to approve entering into an agreement to put radio equipment on a Connecticut company water tower, which would improve our coverage for radio for police-fire EMS across town.
Must be a new antenna, a new location.
Correct, a new location. Previously, the water company was not viable, we needed to pay to run electricity to the site, there's been other development in the area since then, so now the electricity is immediately available, and the town doesn't have that cost.
Oh.
It's an ability to improve our radio coverage, and this has been part of the monies that we've been setting aside.
Where's the water tower in Clinton?
It is not a water tower in Clinton. The premises is a water...
Water company property, and they would put a tower on.
Well, we wouldn't put a tower on it.
A radio tower.
We put radio equipment on a water tower.
Oh.
I think the water tower itself is in Westbrook.
Oh. Okay.
To shoot signals into Clinton. Just like we have towers in Madison that shoot signals into Clinton.
We have a...
Good. Any other questions?
The flashing wrong-way, is that on 95?
Exit 63 going onto 95...
South.
South.
Okay, good. Because I worry about the house on 95 North. Okay, good.
And that wouldn't be installed until sometime in 2024, after the open bid, the bids would be advertised December 2023.
The entrance and the exit are right next to each other.
Right, I was thinking of the 95 North, and there's a house that faces it, that would suck.
Any other questions?
So there's going to be more discussion about the sidewalks at this smaller project at some point in the future?
I would need some direction to tell the department whether we're interested in utilizing the grant or not.
Do we, when do we have that discussion?
We'll do it next meeting.
Okay. Did they, in this new project, did they choose not to redo all the new sidewalks that are already there in front of those new apartment buildings? Because there's so many new sidewalks already there.
So the town made this ask.
Right.
Just to remind everybody, the town made an ask, the town at that point in time said it would fund the 20% match. The town was initially rejected, but then the DOT got money through ARPA and said instead of going back out, they were going to look at the rejected projects. So the cost estimate was updated, I think our lift was half a million to pay for sidewalks, the council was not inclined to fund that, so we went back to the department, started to scope what could be a smaller project that would both be viable but also pull down our expense. So it went from CVS to the railroad crossing at High Street. That was a segment that was meaningful to try and pull down our expense to keep going, takes you back down the road to the original project, takes you back down to increased cost.
And since then, quite a few new apartments were put there with new sidewalks in front of them.
But that's on...
That's not in this new area.
This is CVS to North High, most of those are on the other side.
The Valero station, past...
There is one, but not...
You're going up to basically that liquor store, and that's about it.
If they were to just do in front of Valero's, there's no sidewalk there, and that is a crazy scary place to walk through.
That's why the project is expensive to create right-of-way, and there will be some acquisition, and then you would be creating proper curb cuts, and so it's not without its complications.
Right, no, nothing is.
We have a cost estimate, and then we have to respond to, do we want to do the project yes or no.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, here are none, we'll move on to item number 10, council discussion. Anything anybody would like to discuss this evening?
Does Park and Rec have any idea as to when they will work on those, say the soccer field? I mean, I know they're designing it now, but when would they expect to have that?
I mean, I know they're designing it now, but when would they expect to have that replaced? This school year?
So the bleacher project and the replacement of the turf at I Rock are, cannot happen because you're going into sports activity, so.
It won't happen this year.
You're at design, and then you're into the winter, and you wouldn't really be doing pouring concrete or any other work. So you would be lining up for spring work at the earliest for those. Pickleball, it will take time to get through inland wetlands, and then you're going to face shutdowns of asphalt plants, so that's probably something that would likely be spring work at the same time. And then bathhouse work, that could happen anytime, but you're going to not want to necessarily inconvenience the public.
Right. Like the soccer field, is a price going to go up, given the time differential? Maybe?
I would imagine that that's an outside risk that that could happen, but it took as long as it took to get the project approved, and it is what it is.
Okay.
Anybody else? No, good. All right, move on to item number 11, town council committee liaison reports. Anybody have anything to report?
Park and Rec got, no, not Park and Rec. Who are they? Planning and Zooming. They had an application for the Bank of America building for it to be restaurant on the ground floor and a, an apartment on the upstairs. I guess they'll be listening, getting more than the application next time. And then the Victorian Village, which is on the west end.
Next Grove Gardens.
Next to Grove Gardens. There, there was a long conversation on that one, but they want to have an adaptive reuse of housing and then build a new apartment building. That was not without complication, and that can, that will continue. But it's interesting, the stuff that's going on.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll give you my policeman. The, not that too many people, well, I guess you wouldn't be worried about it. The state just gave us two fixed speed monitors.
Nice.
One of them will be put by the school up on Glenwood Road.
It's there.
To keep people slowing down there, hopefully. And the other one, I guess the police department felt that there seems to be a need for it on Long Hill Road. So they're going to put that fixed one.
They fly.
I'm pretty sure it's there.
There's a need, there is a need on one of those.
So altogether, because we have three of our own, so now we have five speed monitors located throughout the town. Again, don't shoot the messenger, but supposedly the state's going to be out here this week and inspect that Indian River landing situation. And from what the police or traffic commission has been told is that everything is in place for it to be approved, and that it should be open within a week or two. Indian Landing up by.
The traffic at Big Y?
Yeah.
Okay.
The North Ex.
The rice burn and stuff has been completed, supposedly to their satisfaction. They'll click on the lights to make things better, so hopefully that will get done.
That's great.
It opens up the north.
Carl already updated you about the fact about exit 63. In case people didn't know it, the communication center in the PD went under an update and an overhaul to bring it sort of into the 21st century. As the chief would say when he came in, they had monitors propped up on books and stuff, and all kinds, but I understand that the TPW did an outstanding job, and the communication center is ready to go.
I'm sure the chief mentioned that this is part of the radio replacement project that we've been funding and pursuing grants for, so this would be the first phase of putting in a new dispatch console.
I didn't catch that.
Yeah, what he said.
Right, you were there, Hank, I didn't catch that.
Just want to make sure you have a full report.
Okay, well, and now, I remember, I guess, well, I guess we're now into August. Earlier in the year, I told you that as far as staff-wise and everything, you know, things looked kind of dire over there with a whole bunch of people leaving. Well, it sort of settled down, and right now, we do have one officer who will be leaving in a couple of days, and another officer has picked up a job with the state of Connecticut, and he hasn't finalized the date that he's going to leave. But those are the two most imminent vacancies. On the good side, we have one slot open in the academy for October, so they'll be advertising to try to get a recruit in there, possibly get him off to the academy. And I think I heard the chief say something that he was hoping that he could probably get a lateral transfer someplace. He's out there in the woods looking around, trying to get it so that the impact of the two people leaving won't be so bad. Also, in concurrence with that, where they were looking for maybe, I don't know, six people that were going to leave early in 2024, that's sort of phased out. A lot of them are going to hang around for a while, so at this point, it isn't as dire as I had told you earlier in the year. Hopefully, it will stay that way. The feds will be in sometime in the fall for that inspection of that Kalia certification. The way things are going now, Captain Jacober and Joanne.
Shoav.
Shoav have been working to meet all the standards, and they think that they will be certified early in the spring of 2024. So that's also good news for us, another feather in our cap. And that's it.
It's a wrap?
That's a wrap.
So the Kalia certification is the highest standard, which is, a small number of departments have that, and it's also a higher standard than the state mandate, which came through under the Police Accountability Act. So we will be where we're supposed to be earlier than the state mandate and at a higher level of professionalism than a lot of other departments, so it's all positive stuff.
All positive.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else?
EDC is continuing to develop their database for the downtown section. They're developing it into bike industry.
For the downtown what did you say?
The downtown.
Oh, period. Okay, first said something after that, go ahead.
The river to Grove Street.
Don't say downtown.
I think that's what we kind of told them to go after.
All right. Good?
That's about it.
Anybody else?
I gotta remember to where the herring is.
Huh?
Nothing, nothing.
All right, nothing else, motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained, thank you all again, we'll see you tomorrow night, 6 o'clock.